All right, good evening everyone and welcome to our regular city council meeting here at Laguna Niguel. We are back on the record at 7:01 PM. This time I'd like to ask Bishop Jared Bunker from the Laguna Niguel Church of Jesus Christ of Latter Day Saints to come forward and do the invocation for us. After that, we have the privilege, Boy Scout Troop 772, which will come forward and lead us in the pledge of allegiance. So Bishop, it's all yours.
Our Father in Heaven. We're very grateful that we can gather as citizens and council members this evening. Very grateful for the opportunity to discuss the needs of our community and the needs of those who might be living abroad. We ask for a blessing on those who are watching over us, who are protecting us, our safety and also our health. Please bless them and please bless their families. Also, as we counsel together this evening, please soften our hearts. Help us to find common ground. Help us as we try to reach decisions that, we will meet, reach those decisions that might benefit everybody to the best of our abilities. We ask for a blessing on those in our community, that they might be even more inspired to reach out to each other, to be good neighbors, to serve one another. And also, as we think about our own civic duties, please inspire us on how we might change our own hearts and our own actions to better our communities. We're grateful for the freedoms that we enjoy and we ask for a blessing on those in the armed forces who might be protecting us. And we do this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, please remain standing. Boy Scout Troop 772, color guard advance. Please place your hand over your heart. Those in uniform and veterans salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Two.
Guys, if you stay put, we'll come down and take a picture with you. Thank you. Do we have any troop leaders here with us tonight? Anybody willing to sign up for the job tonight? Okay, anyone. That's okay. I get it. I don't think they all drove here by themselves, but if you want to come up. Welcome. Thanks guys, thanks for being here. Is this everybody's first day of school? No, have you been in school for a week? Oh, your first day of school? Oh, next week. The mayor, Troop 10 is going back to school. So, well, thanks all for coming out tonight. I want to give a chance to say hi to everybody. If you will, I'll give you a microphone and you can tell us your name, what school you're at and what grade you're in.
Hi, my name is Ryder. I go to St. Edwards Confessor Parish School in Dana Point and I am in sixth grade.
Hi, I'm Jack. I go to Harbor Day School in Newport Beach and I'm going into seventh grade.
Hello, I'm Michael. I'm going into sixth grade and I go to St. Edwards.
Hi, my name is Zane. I am going into seventh grade and my school is Niguel Hills.
Hello, my name is Matthew and I am in ninth grade. I go to school at Lisa Niguel High School.
Hi, my name is Kevin Hutchinson. I'm an assistant scout leader and I'm in senior class.
Well, on behalf of a grateful city, I just want to say thank you for all you're doing to help mend our future leaders, give you one of our challenge coins and say thank you. Guys, thank you very much. Thank you for coming out. You are our future leaders, of course, and this is, it means so much to have you all here and I really, really appreciate it. Do you mind if we take a picture with you? Okay, good. No one's ever said no yet. All right, who's going to dismiss this?
Color guard dismissed.
Thank you very much. Good job, guys. Our, our only presentation tonight is, is a little bit brief, but I don't want to, I don't want to move past it too, too quickly. It's fairly important. We have a proclamation that we'll be presenting to, at the appropriate time, but this is in honor of Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, which is in September 2019. More than 15,000 children from birth to the age of 19 are diagnosed with cancer each year, which are approximately 42 childhood cancer, different types of diagnosis a day. And so, we as the city have tremendous compassion for that and want to make sure that we are giving it appropriate time. So, I, we have prepared a proclamation that we will be presenting to them and just wanted to take a moment to say thank you and, and remember that. So, thank you very much. And we are done down here. We can go back up. So now, we will turn to public communications. Any person wishing to address the city council will need to complete and present to us one of the gold color requests to speak form and provide those to the city clerk. Those forms are available on the counter that's located near the door of the council chambers. Be aware, please be aware that the time limit will be three minutes for each person to speak. To allow equal time for speakers, minutes may not be given to another speaker. You may have another person read your written statement. At this time, City Clerk Gomez, I believe I have three requests to speak. Do you have any more?
No, ma'am.
Okay, very good. Our, our first speaker will be Dennis Mulvaney. You have many hats on tonight, Dennis.
Oh, yes, indeed I do.
Welcome.
Dennis Mulvaney, 23, 862 Windmill Lane, Laguna Niguel, California. A long time resident, 1973. Anyway, I saw the request for handicap come through the email and so forth and I'd like to propose one thing that I've noticed that our city could use. The elderly and handicap are having a problem, especially on windy days on our front doors as we come into city hall. I would like to see a handicap electric door be placed on our city hall front door to try to facilitate and help our handicap and of course, on a windy day, even our other people. Plus, I've also even seen a lot of contractors come in with bags and stuff and they have a hard time with that doors. But our city front door is pretty hard to open sometimes. That's it. Thank you.
Good, thank you. And I'll, I ask, I think our handicap assist door is just to the left of the front doors around the corner. So, we do have one. It's not on the front. So, perhaps this is a matter of signage and we can take a look at what might, might be able to help. Yeah. Our next speaker, thank you very much Dennis, by the way. Our next speaker is Jennifer Barb. Hi and welcome.
Hi.
Thanks for coming. If you would please give us your name and address.
Yes, Jennifer Barb, 25171 Hugo Road. And as a mom of, with a young family, a three-year-old and a six-month-old, I want to say thank you for the fun weekend we had, the carnival.
Great.
And it was a great opportunity to get together as a community and, but I also want to share my concerns about the lack of transparency around the county land development. I'd like to know what the next steps are, as well as when, where and how we can start asking our questions and having our voices heard. Because I would hate for the goodwill that you've created this weekend to dissipate quickly as we all start to grumble about the lack of transparency around this. So, I expect some kind of action, just some kind of notification as to what the next steps are. There was a really brief slide about like the key, like the critical paths of the project, but it was so brief, it was really hard for me to see what the next step is. And I, I really want to represent the young families here in Laguna Niguel. And I'm nervous about doing this, but I really think it's hard for us hardworking young families to get to these meetings. And so, our time needs to be spent wisely and I need to know where I can focus my efforts. So, please let me know where I need to be, when I need to be and how I can voice my questions, as well as share some of my opinions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our final speaker for the night is Martha McNicholas. Speaking of wearing hats. Welcome Martha.
Hello, Martha McNicholas, 23, Malibu, Laguna Niguel. Laguna Niguel resident for 31 years. So, actually, I'm here wearing two hats. Pam Lawrence would have liked to come, but she didn't want to give us, give you all her coughs. So, I'm speaking for her. And our Relay for Life team and for CUSD. Number one, thank you for a wonderful community event. We had a lot of interest in our Relay for Life booth, including meeting over 15 cancer survivors who will be, will get personal invitations to be our special guests at our relay event on September 14th. That's number two. A reminder, and you should have your little pencil with your little reminder date, there you go, of September 14th. And thank you so much for being a presenting sponsor of the event. And as a presenting sponsor, you're entitled to have your own booth. I think probably city people have had enough of booths, booths for a while. But actually, I, I am going to encourage you rather to join the Laguna Niguel City Family Fights Back Team, which Pam Lawrence is the team captain of. You know, that started several years ago when you had a beloved staff member battle through breast cancer and still been a very, very strong team at our relay. So, I would encourage you to join that team or donate to that team on behalf of Pam. And I'm actually joining that team too, because I'm not doing my own team this year. Third, for CUSD, different hat, I have both, I have that button on too. On behalf of the superintendent, we deeply appreciate the partnership, collaboration and opportunity to engage in our, with our community. We had a lot of fun reaching out and talking with constituents. Our principals, trustees, parents, staff and teachers all helped. Thank you very much. And on a fourth thing, I don't even have a yellow light yet. On a personal note, you may know that I was diagnosed with, diagnosed with melanoma 31 years ago. And you may or may not know that I was recently diagnosed with melanoma again, 31 days ago. Well, I got my sutures out today and the biopsy results are negative. So, I beat this darn thing again. So, time to celebrate and thank you.
Great day to celebrate. Thanks so very much, Martha. Excellent. Any more requests to speak for us? Okay, great. We will now have public commission closed and we'll move on to our consent counter, items one through 10. Note, just for the record, that we are voting on a current version of item number three and item number seven. Both of those are in the council's red folders. Just make sure they had a chance to look at that. Are there any items that need to be pulled for discussion? None to my right, anyone to my left? Is there a motion to approve consent? Second. Okay, it's moved by Mayor Pro Tim, seconded by Councilwoman Jeneway. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, abstain. Motion carries unanimously. Because this is just how awesome we are. That concludes our regular schedule. We have no discussion items tonight and we will move on to other business and council reports. Because Councilman Menegar has had the least amount of time to prepare. I will turn to him to my left. He just got off an airplane from, from up north, I think.
That's right. Thank you very much. Well, the, the main announcement is with regard to the public meeting that we are going to have at the city count, city hall of Irvine this upcoming Thursday is right after the Orange County Council of Governments meeting. Our meeting, official meeting starts at 10:30 until 12 noon. We are going to be discussing the business matters of Orange County Council of Governments. Then, right after that, I've requested from Mayor Christina Shay of Irvine to open up the chambers for all the public to attend. This is in reference to the methodologies for the Reno Regional Housing Needs Assessment, which is very, very important for our community, as well as any other communities in South Orange County. Because again, I mentioned that during the last meeting of the city council, that this is very crucial to provide our inputs as a community. I'll be there and I'll be making statements on behalf of the six cities that are represented under the OCOC umbrella. However, let me go over through a couple of timelines. The first one is this public meeting that we are going to have. By the way, I requested that along with some other members from other districts in South Orange County and SCAG Board approved it to have it at the city of Irvine. I wanted to have it closer to us than, rather than going to Burna Park or other parts of Southern California. So, the meeting is going to be basically discussing the three methodologies that are being presented to the public and to all the city officials. So, again, the methodology is going to cover how the Reno numbers are going to be allocated. As you know, there are two pivotal areas. One is in reference to how people can access to transit. And the second one is how they can have access to jobs. Obviously, accessing to jobs for a city like Laguna Niguel would be Irvine, Irvine Spectrum, Newport Center, Fashion Island, or some people commute to LA or Santa Monica or Culver City or other hot jobs, you know, areas. We want to make sure that we echo our concerns that we are going to be, you know, basically handicapped in that area. We want to make sure that we don't get penalized for that. So, the deadline for providing all the comments would be until beginning of September of this year. The whole thing started back in February 2019 and then October through December would be the, the discussion is going to be transcribed to the SCAG's subcommittee meeting on housing. And the lady from the city of Yorbalinda Peggy Wong is the chairwoman for that. Everything goes to that subcommittee of SCAG. And then they are going to be making the official, I guess, presentation to the SCAG board. I'm on the regional board of SCAG, so I'll be voting on that for all the six cities in South Orange County. However, we want to get, we want to receive the feedbacks of everyone from the South County cities that, to reflect how we want to see the Reno numbers to be. Let me go back through the, the time. This is the sixth cycle for Reno. Every eight years, they do that. So, the next opportunity we're going to have would be 20, let's see. It's going to be eight years from, basically from now. So, it's going to be a long time until we can go back to SCAG and change it. Once it's finalized at SCAG, it goes to the governor's office and the state of California and they're going to be running for those numbers. What does it mean to us? Then, Sacramento is going to be mandating a city such as Laguna Niguel with 66,000 population, what kind of housing numbers we must have. They're going to dictate it to us. We want to change the process. We're going to tell them that what we need to see. Obviously, let me look at it from a Obviously, let me look at it from a global perspective. There are one hundred and ninety-one cities in Southern California, obviously. And it's going to go by the majority of the cities, the majority of the districts, how they are going to be voting. We may not be able to change that, but what we can change is our concerns, our issues. Because for the next eight years, our community development department is going to be stuck with those numbers. When we're going to be updating our general plan, that housing element is going to be updated based on what the number's going to be mandated by Sacramento ultimately. So the potential negative ramification of the pursuit would be, we are going to be stuck with some numbers that we may say, well, we're not going to be happy with. And that's why a lot of cities, city of Lake Forest have told me they're going to be showing up at the meeting to basically echo the same thing. And mayor of Irvine is coming to basically express the same. You're welcome, Mayor Jennings, to join us. It's between one to three. But as a regional board member and as, as the official for OCOC, I'm going, I'm going to be conveying the message to everyone that this is where we stand. Unlike other cities, we have nothing against other cities, but there are some cities that they have a lot of jobs there. They happen to be low income. They have a lot of transit facilities. They have a lot of bus routes. They have a lot of transit. And they are going to be favored when it comes down to the allocation or restriction. So when they impose upon us, because we are a typical suburban city, we are going to be penalized by default. Because they're going to say that, well, you know, because you don't have X number of, you know, affordable housing units, therefore you are going to be on the lower side, therefore you have to accommodate more, even though we may not need to. So it's a very, very political, hot political discussion at our OCOC meeting. Everybody's so passionate about Reno numbers, because for the next eight years, again, we are going to be stuck with that. And Jonathan, you're welcome to join. We have, as I said, between one PM and three PM to express on behalf of the city. If Mayor Jennings would like to attend, you're welcome to join me. Otherwise, basically, our position is clear and I've echoed that in the past and everybody knows that. We want to make sure that we get a fair share for our, you know, our quota, if you will.
Well, I, I want to say thank you, by the way. This probably is one of the most important things regionally that we'll deal with in a while. The Reno numbers dictate almost everything we do at economic development level. They impact. If you want to know what they impact, ask Huntington Beach, who got sued by the state of California for being four hundred units short on just their allocation, not the units themselves. So this is an incredibly important discussion. My understanding is, I know that you'll be there. I think that the Mayor Pro Tem's going to be there. Are you going as well? I'm not, I make sure that we've got Brown Act coverage on that to make sure that we're, that we don't have too many folks in the room. But that was the reason I was bowing out, but I, I'm happy to go and would love to go and would love to speak if that's something that, that we need. But I just want to say thank you, by the way, for your position on that.
By the way, deserve lunch at twelve for whoever that would be attending the meeting, so.
Great. Well, thank you for that. We will, anything else?
Attending a bunch of other meetings that I don't want to bore you with what I, why I always attend.
I appreciate that. The next is Councilwoman Jeneway.
Well, I just would like to echo Mayor Jennings and thank Councilman Minigar for your expertise and the professional skill that you lend our city. Your presence on SCAG is very important to our city. So thank you for all that you do there. And I'll be attending for the public input portion of the meeting as a member of the ACCOC Legislative Committee. We were all asked to be there and, you know, kind of provide the voice for Laguna Nigal and representing our residents here. Other, some of the meetings that I've had since our last council meeting was, I always like to say this, Saquama, South Orange County Watershed Management Area Executive Committee. Now that I've told you the title, the, the title is much more exciting than the committee, but it is a collaboration between most of the South County cities and the water districts as far as maintaining our wetlands and a lot of the water projects that are done regionally. Just, you know, I'm not going to make this long, because I know staff has had a busy, busy week. But thank you so much to everyone on staff for the incredible carnival. Did a fantastic job. I know everyone in our state, our city family has been working on this for months, but especially to Director Giglio and your staff. This, these last three days over the weekend, you were out there every day with smiles on your faces and thousands and thousands of smiles of our residents. So thank you for all you did to bring so much joy to our city. And I look forward to having a full review of that to see if we can do it again. So, but it was, everyone, it just had an incredible time. On Saturday, we hosted the families of one of our adopted military units. The families of the USS Stockdale were here at the carnival thus, and the Military Support Committee, which is funded by the generosity of our residents who support the car washes and the different fundraisers, provided tickets for the kids to go on all the rides. And we had three of their officers here with us. We had commanding officer Leo Leos, executive officer Brandon Buher, and command master chief Jared Mueller. And they can't say enough about Laguna Nigal. They continually praise our community for all the support that we show to the military and their families. So thank you to all of our residents for making that happen. And this morning was a Laguna Nigal Chamber of Commerce breakfast. Our chamber continues to be active and engaged in a very vibrant part of our community. Thank you, mayor.
Councilwoman Raines.
Thank you so much. Just a few things. It's back to school, so I just want to remind everybody to pay attention when you're out on the roads and watch for kids, because that's real important. Also, this Thursday at, I think it's one o'clock, I'm just going to pull up my calendar real quick, because I want to make sure to let people know. With the passage of AB three twenty-nine, a lot of our school districts are going to be adopting new, healthy ACT curriculums. And so this Orange County Board of Education will be having discussions about that and taking public comments on that this Thursday. I'm trying to find the, the actual location, so I can let everybody know. And I apologize, I was ready and then my phone turned off. Okay, it's two hundred Kalmas Drive, Costa Mesa. And the meeting starts at two o'clock. So if you're a parent and you're concerned and you want to hear what's going on, that's, that's a place that you can go. It's a public meeting. Also, wanted to welcome our new city manager, Tammy Luterno. It's her first meeting, so welcome. And thank you, Allison, and your staff. It was amazing. It was a great, big undertaking. And you put on a safe, wonderful event for our city and our family, so I very much appreciate that. And that's it.
Mayor Pro Tem, Dave.
All right. I'm going to be talking about ACCOC. I was appointed president this year. And one of the things I wanted to do is actually bring ACCOC back to its foundation and why it was formed. And so our executive director, Bruce Channing, and myself have been doing a tour. So we've been going to every city, meeting with the city manager and usually the mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, to give them an idea of what we're doing, get, getting their input, because that's important. So some of the things we're doing this year is, education to me is really important. And so we are working on things such as having programs with the split tax, split road tax, rental control, how it's going to be affecting our businesses. I'll be working with the chamber as well. We're also going to be doing an annual conference, kind of like the league, but we thought we'd do something down here, so you don't have to worry in regards to expenses. So you can just come and probably be like two or three day, but also at those, you'll be able to get training. So we want to make sure that new commissioners, that are new council members that have had an opportunity, they can get their training there as well. So we'll be taking, you know, advice in regards to different programs, but that's something that's really important to us as well. And, you know, the main thing is that we find is when we go to the different cities, you know, we're not perfect. So the number one thing is how can we be better? What are we missing? And I realize that, obviously, and we all know that, our different regions here, that the south and the central and north aren't the same. We all have different concerns and yet we do have a lot of the same. So obviously homelessness, housing, sober living homes, things like that. Those are educational programs we can always do and keep up on, but also things that are happening for each city. And each city does have other concerns, so we're going to really focus on that. We want them to realize that we're here for them. And when it comes to legislation, we're going to be pairing with the league. Because we realize that the league is very strong and they have a bigger voice up in Sacramento. So Tony Kardnis, who is the Public Relations Manager, he's going to be joining us at our legislation meetings from now on, so that we could work together as a team. And most likely, we'll probably go up there when we do the advocacy trip to Sacramento, we'll go as a group. So again, we're going to have a lot more input coming in together, a lot stronger and more as a solid figure, and same with DC. So we're doing a lot of new things. We're really getting a lot of great input. It's amazing. When you go around and just take the time to talk to someone and say, thank you, and how can we help you? We're actually, it looks like we're going to be bringing back a couple of memberships that we lost, as well as thanking them, thanking those that have done it. So I think it's working well. So that's my ACCOC tour and update for the year. And of course, any concerns you guys have, let me know. Any programs you'd like to see, that's what we want to hear. We want you to see that there's value in our membership. And then I do want to finish off again with the carnival. As an event planner, bravo, bravo, bravo. I would stand up, but, you know, get back down. Police services, thank you so much. You know, you guys were there. My prayer was, Lord, let me not hear anything bad come out. And that, when that Sunday eight o'clock hit, it was like, thank you. You guys were incredible. You were there. And it was great for the community to get to see you as well, so it was a win-win for me. Parks and Rec, unbelievable. I mean, it really was. To put this on the first time, I was just blown away. And I just want to say thank you so much. And as well as to our community leaders that came to our different outreach meetings to put their input, because this community, this carnival, was your carnival. And it really was your, your vision. So we want to thank you for that. And, and it was really great for all these people to come out and see the different clubs that we have, because a lot of people don't know that. Especially the younger couples with children, they're busy doing what they need to do. And so I think that a lot of different clubs are going to have a few new members coming up down the line. So again, thank you everyone for just incredible job. Thank you, mayor.
Great, thank you very much. And, you know, this is probably one of my favorite weeks in the history of Laguna Nigal. I mean, I've been here for twenty-five years and maybe I just like carnivals. I'm starting to question something about myself. But it, it really was one of those moments that reminds me, one, why I got into public service, two, why I live in Laguna Nigal, and three, what a wonderful place that we have. It started off with an idea about trying to be reparative. And I joked with a couple of people, and I think I was only half kidding, is that it didn't matter if we were having a thirtieth anniversary this year or not, something like a carnival was going to happen. So the truth is, is that we came into this year in a fairly divided world. I don't know that it's repaired itself a lot over time. But, but it didn't take a whole lot for us to turn on the evening news or look on our computers or phones, or whatever it might be, and realize that division was all around us. And the idea behind this was to find a way that through time, a community with its organizations, its residences, and its businesses could come together for something that was different than they're accustomed to. And it started off with community meetings with all of our stakeholders, the businesses, and as we heard, the community organizations, the faith-based groups, the, really, every form of community organization we have was invited into that process. And it was fun and we heard them. And I'm looking at some of the members that were there at those meetings, they're still here. And we, we enjoyed that. It was kind of fun to talk about our favorite things about the community and watch that then come together over time and sort of manifest into this, this little gem of a, of a weekend that I, I told somebody, and probably told each of you, that I don't know what it cost ultimately yet. We'll find out. But I don't know what the cost was. But whatever it was, what we were buying was priceless. What we were paying for was a community spirit, a sense of togetherness, a reparative effort to our community that I think is one of those things that, the glow of which will probably last a long time. And the only question that I had, and I must have had it more than a hundred times, it's probably several hundred times, is can we have this again next year? And, and I told them that I have a vote. It's only one, but I think I have an idea where that vote's leaning. So it was extraordinarily well-received. It was a, it was the byproduct of some extremely good execution. And you got to remember, this was all done from scratch, you know? This was, this was a product of a blank sheet of paper turning into something extraordinary. And, and it was a group effort. I know that Parks and Rec plays point on these things, just because it's a, it's a natural function of who they are. And boy, did they do a good job. But then I think of Comdev and all that they did, and Public Works, and getting our streets and, and everything handled. And then our admin staff, who worked tirelessly to coordinate all this amongst the departments. And I want to go back in a little bit of time and thank our former city manager Christine Ridge for all the work that she did while she was here getting all that done. So she was a big organizer of that. And lo and behold, Bob Hall showed up as the interim city manager and ran with it too. And I think all those great meetings were so very productive. And then, and then Tammy, you step in and you, you just enjoy the weekend. So it's, it's, it's the perfect gig. So we'll have to do that again next year. So it, it really, it, it really was fantastic. And I want to just jump on something that the Mayor Pro Tem said. The reason that it was so fun, and the reason that there were so many smiles, is because we were safe. You know, we, we live in a city that is one of the safest cities in the country, but we are ever mindful that we are vulnerable in the extreme at any given moment, especially when you gather fifteen thousand people in a single place, of what could happen. And so Chief, to you and your deputies, and to Jack for the administrative work done ahead of time on this thing. It was, it was a blessing, moment after moment, to know that you guys were there and you were at it, and we felt very safe. And I greatly appreciate it. And to the extent that it hasn't been expressed enough to your guys, please let them know. The men and women of the Laguna Nigal Police Services did a fantastic job. So thank you for that. And I think that's it. I, I, I want to say thank you to the council, because you were all there. And I saw a lot of smiling faces and friends and family, and it was really nice to get out to hang out with you all as well. So thank you very much for that. And welcome, Tammy. First meeting. Not a bad first week, by the way. That may be one for the books. If anybody's got a better first week as being CM, I, I don't know where that city is.
I have a great story to tell.
Okay, good. Well, we'll, we'll come around. Well, thank you much to everybody. That's all I had. Let me turn to Chief McDaniel.
Thank you, mayor, and thank you for the kind words. As you said, Sergeant Jack Songer did a ton of work on this, as well as Sergeant Paul Rowe and Deputy Todd Skozelik, and really, they just knocked it out of the park. I was more the face than anything else. They did all the behind-the-scenes work and put the whole plan together, so I'd really like to thank them. And your kind words meant a lot to our guys who were there that night. It meant a lot to be part of the community and I tell you, they were touched by it. So thank you. We were able to get to Capital Unified School District's opening today. I think we pretty much hit every campus. But we're looking forward to a good year, as Councilmember Raines said. Kids are out and about, so folks, slow down. While I was getting to a school today, I saw some things I didn't really care for. Kids are in the crosswalk, so I'd encourage our citizens to leave a little early, a little, add a little, a couple of minutes to their time and slow down, please. The kids are out there. We will be out there. We don't want to enforce. We'd rather give out stickers and things like that, but we will be doing that. So just everybody, slow down. But Labor Day's coming up as well, so I'd encourage folks, if they're going to be out partying or barbecuing, to arrange a ride before they start having some, some beers or other things. It's always better to plan ahead and get that ride going. And it's really all I have. I do, I do appreciate it. We felt that sense of community this weekend. I tell you, my guys felt that, and really, it was a good time for all of us. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Chief. City Attorney Innis.
Yes, all I have to say is congratulations to all for a great carnival. Thank you.
Saw you there, eating a funnel cake or something. What was that thing?
Yes, and I'm glad that we didn't ride the zipper.
No, that's a... There isn't, there isn't a bucket big enough to get me on the zipper. Comdev Director Orduna.
No comments this evening, thank you.
Wow, thank you. Deputy City Manager Bell.
Thank you. I just wanted to remind all of those who are involved in community organizations that we're accepting applications for community service grants. The application period closes August twenty-ninth. Thank you.
Thank you. City Clerk Gomez.
Hi, mayor and council. I also wanted to welcome Tammy. I'm so excited to see her sitting across from me. I'm looking forward to many, many meetings. I also wanted to say, it was so nice to see Kevin at the carnival as well. I was there for all three days, so I saw lots of people here and there. I didn't get to see Tammy and her daughter with Jackie's daughter, though, but I did get to meet Jackie's son. But I also wanted to say, I've been to many carnivals in many cities, and I never felt as safe as I felt this weekend. I walked around by myself most of the time at night, and I wasn't worried at all. I would never have done that in San Bernardino, ever. I would never have done that in San Bernardino, ever, by my own. So, I just wanted to thank police services.
They probably don't watch our TV program anyway, so we're good.
I know. They know because I grew up there in that city, so I spent many years at the National Orange Show. But anyway, I just wanted to thank you all for a great event, too, and especially police services. It was really nice to see them all there. And Officer Todd tried twice, our little ring toss game that no one could make, and he made it.
Ah, well done. Matt.
He was working, but there were kids, you know, he was just like enjoying everything, but he got right back to work.
So, you said you saw the city attorney there wearing a tie and eating one of those giant corn dogs, is what I saw.
Yeah, we got a picture of him, too, in front of the L.N. sign and everything. I have to send it to you, Kevin. It's a good one. Thank you.
What's left of Director Giglio.
Thank you, Mayor. My team is overwhelmed by all the thanks coming in from the public and for the city council. So, thank you for your support. It was a fun event for us. They are walking zombies right now. They are exhausted. But, and to my team members and the executive staff, your teams were amazing and helped us out so much in so many ways. Welcome, Tammy. I feel like you've been here for four years after this week. Looking forward to the future. And I do need to recognize our city attorney was there and did have some advice for me when I asked him some questions. So, he was equally as involved as everybody else in this, too. So, part of our team.
Yeah, what did that cost us, Kevin?
A funnel cake. And obviously, Lieutenant McDaniel, forever grateful for your staff. They were wonderful to work with. They have such a good sense of humor. Really, the safety is the most important part of it. The community groups, my favorite part, and the people in this room, I think I saw them at sometimes three different booths dedicating their time, sometimes all the day. So, it was a great event. We will give you a full report. We have a few things to wrap up, but we'll be having that too soon. So, thank you very much.
Again, fantastic. Thank you. Director Scott.
I'd just like to echo everything everybody else said and a big thank you to my team and my staff who was there throughout the weekend, making sure all the traffic control that had been laid down was keeping everybody safe. Also, welcome to Tammy. We're very excited to have you here and what a great party to have this weekend for everyone. That's all.
Thank you. Now, something about a story.
Oh, no, I just said, it will go down in city manager history that I had the greatest week of any new city manager ever, and I'll be able to tell that story for many years to come. So, first, what a wonderful first week. I couldn't have asked for a better and more loving welcome to a new community. So, thank you to all of you and the staff and the community. I definitely felt it. The cards and the flowers and everything, so sweet, and I'm so, so happy to be here.